Let's call the meeting of the Woodya Regional Vocational Technical High School's school committee to order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Early.
Yeah.
Ms. Sullivan. Mr. Rossi.
Here.
Ms. Coppinja.
Here.
Ms. Delai.
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Here.
Mr. Paglia.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Ms. Lowell.
Here.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Online.
She's online. Can't hear her.
Is there a mic working? Are you on mute? Can't hear her.
Are you on mute, Joanna? No? Move up the volume. Katie? She says she can hear us.
She's bumped up here.
She can't participate.
Okay.
It can be here both ways.
Ms. True, try now, please. I could do it over here.
I will, but to comply with the remote meeting, if she can't hear both ways, she cannot participate in the meeting.
Because I may have to reboot the computer, restart the meeting.
Continue the roll call. She can't participate until we get here.
Ms. O'Kana.
Here.
Mr. Silvaski. Chair.
Here.
Ms. True, can you say something, please?
Yes, I'm here.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Are you hearing on the TV, please? Or just from this computer?
No, I think I was on this computer.
Please join us for the political agents.
My gentlemen and ladies, in the name of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands our nation, our empire, and of this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Those attending tonight's meeting should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by Woodya Tech. Any audience member who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the chairperson who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Mass Wiretap Statute. First item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment?
Hi, I'm Michael Colburn. One of the Salisbury Selectmen and also on the building board. And also has been working since the beginning, actually the end stage of the building being built, the first project. Supported it then, support it now. Just wanted to say thank you to Maureen and Scott for our meeting on Monday. We really want to work with you guys as leaders of our communities. With Scott and Maureen there, I think a lot of miscommunication that was going on may be solved now. And I just wanted to say to both Maureen and Scott, thank you for coming. I know all the other leaders like to hear from you guys. We're going to have to really work hard together to understand each other more, I think. After the last meeting, I was a little concerned. I think moving forward, I think where you have a better light of, be able to work with each other. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mike, for inviting me. Anyone else here for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Did we receive any written public comment?
We did not.
All right. Saying no more, move on to the next item on the agenda. Approval of minutes, September 10th, 2025, minutes of the regular school committee meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Murphy to approve, seconded by Ms. Lowell. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Coppinja.
Yes.
Ms. Delai.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Paglia.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Lowell.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Can't hear her again.
Yes?
Ms. O'Kana.
Yes.
And the chair.
Yes, passes. Payments of Bill's financial report, there is no treasurer's report. October will be on the November agenda. Communication, student representative report, Richard Dychikov.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and members of the school committee. Let's get right into it. The varsity football team is off to a strong start with a record of 3-1. The JV team is undefeated at 4-0, and the freshman team is also on a winning streak. Both the boys and girls cross-country teams are performing well. The girls' team remains undefeated and will compete against Greater Lowell next week. The boys' team is being led by their top runner, who has not lost a race so far this season. The girls' volleyball team is progressing steadily through its season. After a slow start, the boys' soccer team has shown improvement. The team is undefeated in its last three games, tying with Arlington Catholic, Nishoba, and Bull Catholic. Optimism is building as the season continues. The girls' soccer team is off to a 1-6 start. With only two seniors, the team is very young, but continues to improve every day. This week, the team will play at home against Lowell on Wednesday and Lawrence on Thursday, two matches that present strong opportunities for success. Now getting into the clubs. The student government is busy preparing for Spirit Week and the annual homecoming dance. Spirit Week will take place October 6th to the 10th, with themed activities designed to encourage school-wide participation. On Thursday, October 9th, a fall pep rally will be held from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., featuring games such as musical chairs. On Friday, October 10th, the homecoming dance will be held, with tickets on sale for $10 in the school store during lunch. The multicultural club has held two successful meetings to start the year. Several freshmen have joined and actively contributed. One volunteered to present about her heritage country, Greece, while two others delivered morning announcements for Hispanic Heritage Month. Returning members have taken on leadership roles and continue to volunteer. Members of the interact club have already volunteered at two community events. The Team Haverhill River Ruckus and the Haverhill Rotaries Club diaper drive. The first official meeting of the year will be held on Tuesday, October 7th, where members will plan a fundraiser to purchase holiday cards for distribution at local nursing homes. The National Honor Society is preparing for another year of academic leadership and community service. Skills USA is beginning to its yearly planning and recruitment process. The yearbook club has begun collecting senior portraits. At present, only 30 portraits have been submitted, but with approximately 280 expected by the end of October. Reminders are sent out to seniors and parents in June and September, with a third reminder scheduled for mid-October. Portraits will be accepted until the first week of December. Fall sports photography is underway. Boys' soccer and cross-country photos have already been completed, while girls' soccer and volleyball will be photographed by the end of the week. The first draft of the yearbook cover design has been approved, and the final version will be sent to the printer by the first week of November. The environmental club will hold its first meeting this Thursday. A record number of students signed up during the club fair, and members will share ideas for projects. The club will also receive landing turtles throughout the week through the Head Start program organized by the Parker River Clean Water Association. The poetry club has already met twice this year. Students have written and shared poetry, and the critique provided have been both constructive and positive. The ski club is completing preseason planning for three trips this winter. Based on last year's student survey, members expressed interest in more night skiing. The club is therefore planning two night trips and one Saturday trip. The journalism club has met twice this year, and enthusiasm for the first issue is high. The first edition will be published on November 2nd, just in time for open house. A total of five issues will be released this year, featuring sports coverage, club spotlights, and other school events. Drama club students are preparing for their first one-act play night, scheduled for November 7th at 7:00. Auditions are taking place this week, and rehearsals will begin next week. Two student-directed plays, "The Bench" and "I Think the Psych Teacher Is Dead," will be performed. The art club has started designing pieces for this year's big dog show. Students will be building props to decorate the dog statue for Adford Commons at the end of October. And the chess club has seen a strong start, with more than a dozen new ninth-grade members and many returning students. A student survey indicated strong interest in tournaments, which will begin in a few weeks after player assessments are complete. That is the student report.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the principal assistant superintendent, Mr. Leganes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, rest of the school committee members. I have some happenings that have been going on. Meet the academic night, the teacher night, took place on Thursday, September 18th. All academic teachers were present from 5:30 to 7:30, and parents and guardians followed their student's schedule. Teachers held presentations with their parents, including an introduction and a brief overview of the course and the syllabus of the courses. Teachers planned on about a 10-minute presentation, and it was quite a success again this year. We also kicked off our kindness and gratitude book drive, where students and staff are invited to donate books that they no longer need. Donations will be collected within the home rooms, so they've already started collecting books, children's books from the home rooms. And then the idea would be until February, October, Friday, October 3rd, the collections will stop. And each of the 11 surrounding Woodya Tech communities will receive a Woodya Tech-built little library box, filled with donated books, which will be stationed within each community. So it's going to be pretty neat and just a kindness, and I know that vocational teachers have worked with their crew to design these book boxes, which are built by Woodya Tech. So it's awesome. Spirit Week is next week. I don't know if Ricky touched on Spirit Week, and I'm sure he did, but I just want to go over it. Another fun week for our kids, October 6th through Friday, the 10th. We have our dance that's coming up, but first of all, I'll say Monday's Neon Day. Tuesday is Barbecue Dad and Soccer Mom Day. Wednesday is Music Merch Madness Day. I know Ms. Lynch, and I will be dressing up for that. And then Thursday, Class Color Day, which each class has their own colors to represent. And on Friday, Set Sail Day, nautical theme. So just some fun stuff happening. Then at the end of the week on Friday, and we're still looking for some staff chaperones, we should do a fine because we have the dance. We have our homecoming dance on Friday night. And the last, I think this is our third year of existence, I think, with the homecoming dance. We have about 700, 800 of our Woodya students that are invited only to this dance. Lot of fun for the kids, and you know, it's been a success. Clubs, as you heard, just give you some stats, 289 kids are supporting and connected to 21 of our clubs. Our homecoming dance, like I said, will be Friday. Tickets are $10, and Woodya from 7 to 9, it's going to be on Friday, but tickets are $10, and it's only for Woodya Tech students. Also, our first advisory board meeting is coming up on Wednesday, October 15th, at 6:00 p.m. in the cafeteria. And then our school counseling department has been working with the college admissions representatives throughout the year. Our annual fall college fair will take place Thursday, October 23rd, during our lunches for our students, like we do every year, on grade 11 and 12 students. Also, on Friday, October 24th, Woodya Tech will host its Hall of Fame Dinner, second one in its existence, at the Haverhill Country Club. From the beginning, it will begin at 6:00 p.m. Tickets for the event can be purchased through the foundation, and I think the deadline is when? About the 15th to purchase a ticket for the Hall of Fame. So that's another great event for the Tech. The PSATs will be administered here at Woodya Tech, October 21st, 22nd, and over 100 students have signed up so far. Also, Woodya Tech continues its commitment to safety. We are, you know, setting up with our crew to set up for ALIS drills that we do within our system, as long as some fire drills, so we can keep, try to keep this place as safe as possible. And open house, pencil in, November 2nd from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. coming up. That's all I have for you, if you have any questions. Yes, sir?
Mr. Leganes, how well-attended is the open house night beginning of the year, September 18th?
You mean the meet the teacher night? It's the second year that we've done this, and very well-attended. We staggered the starts, and yeah, all things considering, you know, it's a quick meeting, they go through, they get to see their child's classroom. It's academics only, so they're in there, they go through, and it was just... I would say, I would say a little bit over 50%. I think we had this year, maybe, and I'll get my statistician, maybe 65, maybe 65, 70? Yeah, and we usually measure that when the parking lots fall out here, and it was full. So I think it was well-attended. I think Ricky, I probably make it, maybe you could speak to that too. You know, the last couple of years, if you care, Ricky, I know you're a senior, so, but like Associate Principal Jensen said, that she, you know, is mostly attended by the freshmen and some of the crew that's new. But a lot of fun, you know, they're able to see their teacher, and they fly through, and they're asking questions, what a big place this is, and get acclimated to the place.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
Any other questions? Saying none, thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Next item on the agenda is the business manager, Ms. Cosmas, no report posted. I will say, Ms. Cosmas, we could save on our energy costs if we didn't have the heat at 100 degrees in here, so might want to notate that for the future. Next item on the agenda is career technical education coordinators, Amanda Crosby and Paul Muscovitz.
Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, school committee, thank you for this time for us to come. And my co-coordinator, Amanda Crosby, will give you our CTE update. This is my sixth year as vocational technical coordinator, and I oversee the CTE programs, advanced manufacturing, automotive collision and repair, automotive technology, CAD drafting, carpentry, electrical, electronics, robotics, engineering, HVACR, marine service technology, masonry, metal fabrication and welding, plumbing and heating, and I also oversee the cooperative education program.
Good evening, school committee chairs, Superintendent Lynch, and school committee. My name's Amanda Crosby, I am the co-vocational coordinator with Paul. I over, this is my fifth year in this role. I oversee culinary, hospitality, business technology, marketing, cosmetology, design and visual communications, dental assisting, medical assisting, health assisting, early education care, community and visual arts, entrepreneurship, adult education, and then CTI programming.
The next slide is community events and updates. This is only a few things on the list that we have slated for this year. Our carpentry students are right now out at the Georgetown Electric Light, rebuilding stairs at their facility, an exterior stairway in their facility. We will also be scheduling for Georgetown Water Department to remove a door and replace it with a new window. We are also working on redoing some of the old Haverhill Fire Department signs at some of the stations. We did one last year, and they liked it so much, they asked us if we could do a few more, so we're in the process of working on that. Another project that we're working on is we got contacted by the Haverhill Historical Society to make a new sign, well, no, to make a sign. It's, it's, there isn't one right now, and it's for the Lake Woodya Dance Hall, that some people don't have a clue that there was ever such a thing, because it was built in the early 1920s, and it burnt down later that year. So it wasn't even there for one year, but there's a spot where it was built, and I guess is part of the foundation there. And so we offered to make them a sign. Our CAD drafting department and carpentry department are designing a certain sign to feel okay whatever we write on it. Another thing that's on the horizon is our masonry, carpentry, and HVAC program, and possibly a plumbing program, will be doing some work at the Cogswell Art Center. They're refurbishing the Cogswell School and making that into an art center, and they're raising money, so that's why we really don't have a date on when that might happen. Next slide. Next slide, cooperative education update, my favorite part of my job. Right now, we have, as of today, 179 students, which is 56.6% of our senior class, on co-op. So it's going off at a really good pace for hopefully beating out last year's numbers, and we're working hard. The senior teachers are working hard, the senior students are out there looking for jobs on their own also, and we're trying to get those numbers up. New companies and partners are coming up every week almost with taking on some of our kids. We also are continuing our partnership with the Mass Division of Apprenticeship Standards. Our electrical department, and we're hoping to include our plumbing department. We have to submit student names, and they have to pass the recommendation of the teacher and also the administration, that these kids are the best of the best, and they actually get their pre-apprentice cards, so that they can then go and work on union wage jobs, and the students actually makes very, very good money to make that happens. The next slide is our industry-recognized credentials. In the new frameworks from DESI, it's required to have students receive industry-related credentials, and we have been working for the last three years on building that. 279 juniors will be taking OSHA 10 credentials. 215 sophomores will be working on their hot work credentialing. HVAC, there's 24 seniors, so they took the test last year as juniors, but 24 seniors passed the EPA. 40 CFR Part 82 Subpart F under Section 608, refrigeration certification, which is a great, great thing to have in their back pocket. They're also working on A2L, which is now flammable refrigerant certification. And so there's more and more of that type of work out there that our industry partners are working on, so it benefits us to get our students' credentials in that. A new thing we're starting this year, we purchased 12 new train-the-trainer modules from a company called Hard Hat 360. It's, right now, it's our construction, transportation, and manufacturing clusters that are participating in that. And it is, the teachers will have to get certified first, so that then they can certify our students. And so some of the certifications are protective equipment, PPE, hand-powered tools, lockout-tagout, fall protection, scaffolding, ladder safety, scissor lift, excavation and trenching safety, confined spaces, machine guarding, respiratory protection, man overboard and maritime walking, work surfaces. So we tried to get a bunch of different types of credentials, safety credentials, for our students, and we'll be working on, actually freshman, third and fourth quarter freshman, sophomores, and juniors, to try and get it done before they go out to co-op. So some of the career and technical program updates. We have robotics, automation, and engineering technology. We're looking into adding that program to our electronics engineering technology program that we have now. There is a big need for mechanical, electrical, electrical-mechanical technicians out there in the industry, and we feel that teaching our students robotics and mechatronics is something that's going to just be great for the school, great for our students, and get our students more jobs. Freshman Wildcat Speaker Series, we had a former student, Aurora Valente. She came in, she now is a professor at UNH, and she came to talk to our freshmen about work ethic, trying your hardest in everything that you do, learn from mistakes. She gave a whole bunch of different mistakes that she made over the years as a growing adult and in her career and in her education. And it was great because the, it was awesome, you didn't hear a pin drop, this freshman, 320-plus freshman in the auditorium, and it went flawless. And so it was real great to have her come in and speak at the beginning of the school year. She was a health occupation student and graduated in 2011. Freshman Safety Shoe Program, Brunt Workwear. If you haven't heard about Brunt Workwear, they're a company right out of Reading, and they've exploded as far as how big they are. They're across the country and even over in the UK, selling work boots. They have a policy where you buy a pair of work boots, and even if you wore them and didn't like them, you could send them back and get your money back. So with that being said, they can't resell those. And this is now our third year doing this program. We got over 300 pairs of boots from them, and almost, almost, I'm going to say 170-plus freshmen accepted those boots as a donation from Brunt Workwear. So we're super grateful for Brunt Workwear, and now all the vocational schools in the state are now jumping on board, and they're giving them to all vocational schools in the state of Massachusetts if there's a need. So I'd just like to say thank you publicly to Brunt Workwear for their generosity. Updated CTE frameworks. The remaining 10 programs needing frameworks updates will be released and updated during the '25-'26 school year. What that means is all of our shop areas will now have a new frameworks. They'll be able to start working on new standards and be able to teach the students up to the new standards of the Department of Education. It'll also mean that we have to redo our scopes and sequence and be able to come up to speed with that. Job Ready 360. We took on this program as a pilot with a few shop areas to see if we really wanted to use it. At first, when I first heard about it at a seminar that Amanda and I attended, I was like, well, this might be just another software that they just want you to buy. But when we took it and took it for a ride and tried it out, it's going to be a really, really good program for the school. It's going to be like a one-stop shop where the vocational teachers can go to one spot. They can be able to do their lesson plans, advisory board invitations, resumes. Competency tracker is done on it. We're going to try and implement our co-op paperwork through this program, and receiving the grades from the co-op employers through this. And the staff that we hired to learn it and be trained on it, they love it, and so it's getting pushed out now. And there's probably so many other things that you can do on it that we haven't even touched the surface yet. So that's really exciting part of what we're doing for our updates. Amanda Crosby.
I'm just gonna give you some updates on adult education, as I'm sure you saw some of our students walking in. We have a very healthy adult education program. Most students seek our program out when they sign up for another one and they're unable to fill their classes. So we have 145 students, Tier 1 through 5 Electrical, average class size of 24. 132 Tier 1 through 5 Plumbing, class size, I can't see, because it's 26. We are launching our next cosmetology program, that's for adults, so we'll have 10 students enrolled in that beginning January of 2026. We have about 100 students enrolled in Personal Enrichment, and that is Introduction to Woodworking, Introduction to Electrical, Sewing, Photography. And last year, we started doing just one-night cooking classes, and we've continued that with Cooking Series. We just did a Jams and Jelly class, it was very popular, and then I think Monday we're doing Starter Sour Dough Ready to Rice. We mailed 75,000 brochures out to the homes for registration, just classes that are available. It really helps fill some of our programs, especially like Cosmetology, that are a little bit tougher to fill. And we anticipate about 100-plus students to enroll for the spring for our Personal Enrichment courses. Career Technical Initiative Grant Announcement. Nope, I didn't. So Whittier Tech was selected to host Lauren Jones, the Department of Secretary of Labor Workforce, where they came to Whittier and they announced all of the grant recipients for Round 10 CTI. She toured the school. It was unique because a lot of the times when they go to these schools, they're just doing a grant announcement, but we had 100 kids working in the building in the training program, so we were very excited, we're very proud of our program to show that off. So the grant, there was 23 grant recipients that were invited to attend for Round 10, and it was a very nice day to celebrate not only the CTI program, but the Whittier Tech CTI program. Just some updates for CTI. We run it in the summer. It's a grant-funded program, it's for individuals who are considered underemployed or unemployed. 90 students completed it over the summer of 2025 in eight different training areas. We have our Director of Community Partnerships, Tia Gerber, who really kind of hits the ground running, I think she's already been to five career fairs this year, but her efforts in those high schools really showed in our population this year, as it was a very young crowd and mostly recently graduated high school students, which is kind of the target audience that we're recruiting for the program. 50% of the students have confirmed employment in the 30-day follow-up, so that's really good. We have a couple that have confirmed close to 30 days, and we'll continue to work with them over the next year to confirm employment and assist them should they need help finding employment. And on to Round 10. We awarded $931,000 so that we can run the CTI program during the summer of 2026. And just some updates on grant funding. We were awarded $1 million for the Metal Fab Welding Equipment Lab Modernization. So we did most of the equipment purchases last year, and we are working on now doing some updates to the shop, being mindful that most of the stuff needs to be movable, portable. There are some things that we do need to fix while we're here, which is the ventilation, because even if, you know, we're here for five, six more years, it still needs to be updated because it's very poor ventilation, and get a couple more pieces of equipment, so that should be completed by June, the end of June 2026. We were just awarded $42,000 for the Career and Technical Education Partnership Grant. That is the CBTE Exploratory Program. This will be the fifth year that we will offer this, this is the superintendent's baby, she loves it. She said to me, let's do this program, and I'm like, next year? And she's like, nope, this year. I was like, okay. So we open up spots to the community high school students so that they can come for eight weeks and explore one program a week that then they can enroll into CTI. So it was really nice this summer. I think there was seven students from that program, and they were with us all summer, and now even to see them walking in and coming for night school for electrical plumbing to see really how we're able to support the high school students that graduate and they really don't have a pathway. And ongoing efforts, there is a new CTE Expansion Grant that we will apply for, doesn't mean we will get it, but we will sure try, for electrical and plumbing, and that will be with the goal of getting them new equipment and increasing capacity in those programs. That is it. Any questions?
Yes, about the co-op program. I'm just wondering, how many businesses, entities at the municipal do we interact with? And what kind of, like, how easy or hard is it to kind of feed that supply of businesses? Is there a big churn, or it's like the same people over and over?
So we do have, I've been in the school going on 30 years, so we have partners that have been with us since 30 years or more. They rely on us to bring in HVAC or plumbing students and some electrical students, and I would say that 60 to 70% of those students stay onboard and stay working at those companies after graduation. I'm gonna say off the top of my head, and I can give you an exact number, we have approximately 130 to 140 industry partners working with us on co-op. There may be times where a company won't take someone in one year, but that's because either the work isn't there or what have you, but we supply the Merrimack Valley area workforce with great gusto, and it's just a good thing. And if you come to the advisory board, the majority of the people there are our co-op partners.
Thank you. Who else? Mr. Ross?
I just had the CTI program, the employment success, I think that's such a great step that you guys have in that program. Can you just talk about that a little bit, same issue pilot?
Sure, yeah. So it's a grant-funded program through Commonwealth Corporation. Whittier actually was one of the first groups to ever apply and be awarded the grant, so we started way back in Round 1, before even I was in this position. We, so they come in, we spend the year really recruiting at high schools, and we welcome anyone to come to the program as long as they meet the criteria, but our focus has really been on graduating high school students. They come in and they spend seven weeks with us, they complete 200 hours of training. In addition to the career training, we have career coaches that work with them all summer, so they're going on field trips, they're bringing industry people in for interviews, we're working on them. Our goal really is to have them employed before they walk out the door. We have incentives for attendance, we have incentives for post-employment, and we really work with them to get them where they need to be as far as employed.
The check-in after the program's over?
Yep, so we have a 30-day check-in, and then they continue to have outreach either with the person that enrolled them or their career counselor throughout the next. We are required through the grant to follow up with them up into a year.
Yeah, I think that's a fabulous.
We tell the kids, and I say kids because they are younger, but we tell the CTI students, like, you are, you are part of our Whittier family, so if you ever need anything from us, you know, that's what we're here for, we are here to support you.
I think that's absolutely amazing thing for the community.
Yeah, and it used to be done through, in partnership with Mass Hire, and we were actually one of the pilot programs that was allowed to do it all, because we kept saying Mass Hire is wonderful, they're just stretched beyond their capacity. And we always said to them, if you ever have the opportunity for us to be able to do this grant 100% Whittier, let's do it, and then this will be our third year that we're gonna be able to do it all Whittier.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ting, no? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, reports and recommendations of the superintendent. Madam Superintendent.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. On Friday, September 12th through the 13th, I attended the MASSF, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Executive Superintendent Retreat in Cambridge. There was discussion regarding current trends in the superintendency and legislative priorities for this school year. On Thursday, September 18th, I met with Mike McCarthy and Jen Ball from Northern Essex. We continue to meet regularly and work through concerns and issues regarding the possible building project. On Thursday, September 18th, I attended the Remote North Shore Superintendent Round Table Planning Meeting. I'm a part of this group, and we plan for the North Shore Superintendents about what professional development we'd like to have at our meetings. On Monday, September 22nd, I went to the Raleigh Public Library bench. I was there from 2:00 to 3:00, and unfortunately, no one wanted to meet with me, so I sat there all by myself for an hour. But hey, it was a beautiful day, so I enjoyed it. But next time, next year, when that comes through, Caesar, Bernie, back there, someone come and sit with me for an hour. On Monday, September 22nd, I attended the Whittier Tech Alumni Council Meeting, and I want to thank Tia Gerber for organizing this meeting. There are about eight attendees at this meeting, and we discussed various ideas how to get people more involved. We really feel moving forward, if we're moving forward with a building project, we really need to get our alumni support and understanding and advocacy, and show them what Whittier did for them and what, how their life is improved by coming to Whittier Tech. So that's been a real thing that we've been really trying to work on the last couple of school years. On Friday, September 26th, I attended the Superintendent-Principal Meeting with local schools at Northern Essex Community College at the Lawrence Campus. This was an opportunity to hear what's going on with, at Northern Essex, their programs offered and services provided at the school, and most of the superintendents and principals within the area were at that meeting. On Friday, September 26th, I attended the North Shore Superintendent's Round Table Meeting in Danvers. On Saturday, September 27th, I, along with Cara Cosmos, attended the 50th reunion of Whittier Tech at the Roma Restaurant in Haverhill. There were about four or five other classes celebrating, but there were about 100 or so people at that event. So again, trying to get out there more and let them see us and hear us and say we need your help as we move forward. On Monday, September 29th, I attended the special meeting at the Municipal Working Group. We continue to meet and discuss communication strategies and how to all get on the same page. And thank you, Michael, for your kind words. On Monday, September 29th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Taste of the Merrimack Valley with Amanda Crosby. What an event. There was food from probably 20, 25 vendors. Whittier Tech was there, Greater Lawrence was there, and I really want to thank Nick Kedian, Nicole Gruposa, and Christina Perrin and our students. They did amazing job showing what Whittier Tech is all about, and we really did shine at that event. I'm hearing that there might be a Haverhill, a Taste of Haverhill coming, so I can't wait. Anyway, we continue to work through the eligibility items due to MSBA by October 30th. These include the School District Questionnaire, the Enrollment Questionnaire, Chapter 74 Vocational Technical Viability Documentation. You're gonna hear Amanda talk a little bit more about that. And again, I'm grateful for the Municipal Working Group, they are ready to get to work, amending the regional agreement, there's a lot to consider, but all are anxious to get to work on the rack. The regional agreement needs to be amended and agreed to by all of our municipalities before we can move from the feasibility stage to the schematic stage. So there is a real sense of urgency of getting, starting at least to get this work done. So please don't forget about our open house on November 2nd, and please don't forget about our Hall of Fame Dinner. It was wonderful two years ago, this is only our second year, you can imagine, Whittier is 50 years old, this is our only second time doing a Hall of Fame Dinner, and Bev DeSalvo and her team have put in an incredible amount of work to get that accomplished, so thank you.
Next, Chapter 74 Programs to be studied as part of the feasibility study for the proposed project.
Yes, so I'm gonna have Amanda Crosby come back up again to talk about possible programs for us to research as we're looking at a possible building project. And again, this is just us exploring these possibilities as we start moving forward with eligibility and possibly into feasibility. We would have to know if this was the direction we were heading in once we complete feasibility, so.
So just to give you an idea of our existing Chapter 74 programs that we have, and they are done by clusters, Paul and I both went over on seeing the areas that we oversee. Part of this list that has been removed is early education care and design and visual communication, because those are in the process of having closure plans. So potential Chapter 74 pathways that we met as an administration group. We utilize the Northeast Regional Blueprint, really, to see where there is a need in our area for pathways that could be potential successes for our students. And the list that we decided on was criminal justice, public safety, environmental science, sustainability, facilities maintenance management, information support services and networking, robotics and automation engineering technology, which will be added to the existing electronics engineering technology, and then veterinary science. Again, they were selected through looking at the Northeast Regional Blueprint. Entry-level employment opportunities, which was important, we really want to make sure that we provide our students pathways to be successful right out of Whittier, but also additional pathways post-secondary if they wanted to continue into, you know, a two-year, a four-year degree. So I just did some statistics with the new frameworks. DESI has really put together a very nice website that gives us a whole lot of information. So I just did some, like, screenshots of the different pathways, really looking for job growth, medium wages, and current jobs that are in, so emergency medical technicians, public safety telecommunications for criminal justice. Environmental science and sustainability was agricultural technicians with 407 annual openings, median wage of $79,000, and then 221 new jobs. Facilities maintenance, first-line supervisor, housekeeping, janitorial workers, so annual opening $3,500, $57,949 for median wage, and then 1379 new jobs. Information support, service and networking. Since I've been in this role, this, as long as, has been on a high-demand field in the regional blueprint for this area. It continues to pop up, continues to be an area that we would have high needs in, so it's definitely a fitting program. So computer user support specialist, and then database architects. Robotics and animation engineering technology. I know this is something we're looking to put forward now as a nice complement to our existing electronics/robotics program, and this really makes that program full circle with the electronics and then the automation technology. And then veterinary science, 7100 annual openings, $51,000 for the median wage, and then 700 jobs. And that's it?
You need a...
So we need a vote from the school committee to at least start exploring these as possible opportunities as we move forward with the MSBA process.
Is there a motion?
I think Mr. Early has...
As soon as we get the motion on the table, then we'll go to questions. One second, hold on one second, I want to get the motion on the table first, and then we'll do questions.
I will make the motion to accept the CTE potential programs for evaluation.
Motion by Mr. Rose, seconded by...
Second.
Mr. Early, and then Mr. Early, Mr. Fitzgerald, both want to have questions.
Where are you getting this data, you know, there's 7100 openings, there's 700 new jobs?
So this is from the, if you go on the website for the, there's a whole new CTE framework website, and right on that website is where the state has pulled this and gathered this for us, the teachers.
Statewide.
Statewide, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah, I noticed a lot of the new openings that you're looking at probably don't require, but obviously it's more college education, be very helpful in extending those careers. I got an email back in May from an Ipswich eighth grader regarding avionics and stuff, and he was curious about us looking into something like that, as he breaks it down pretty decent here, where shortage of 30,000 pilots, this, that, and, you know, not enough people entering that field, you know? Was that on the list of what you looked at?
It was not. I know Paul has looked into it, so I'll let him speak to that.
So approximately three or four years ago, we looked into that to add now, and first off, there's only a few schools in the state that offer it. I spoke with West Fit Academy, I believe it was, that has that program, and they said to me that if they didn't live, I mean, if they didn't have the school right down the street from an airport, it probably wouldn't have been something that they would have been able to do. They had two former Air Force airplane mechanics, aviation mechanics as their staff members. They got, because of that connection, they got all kinds of donations. I believe, and I'm not sure, that Lawrence has tried to start that program, and they've run into a lot of problems, even though they have a small hangar right over in North Andover, so... So to have something like that, where Greater Lawrence is right next door to us and having it, it was something that we thought that we needed to put off to the side and these other areas made more sense.
Mr. Marlowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say this is a fantastic idea. Someone who is currently studying criminal justice at Merrimack College, I can express how happy I am for you guys exploring this. One question, though, it would be, if someone were to complete a program such as criminal justice or environmental science, how would college, would college credits be allocated prior to enrollment of a college through this program?
We would have to look at articulation agreements. So all of these programs were, we took into account the possible, you know, relocating to Northern Essex and knowing that they had the sheriffs over there. So that was one of the reasons why criminal justice was on our list. But we would, we would be open to looking at articulation agreements so that our students could be getting credit while they're at Whittier and they go to college. We currently have that with our CAD drafting program and our, is it advanced manufacturing? Advanced manufacturing, where our students, we have concurrent enrollment. So we would like to have that as a pathway as well with these new programs.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just wondering, what's your process moving forward in terms of, you know, evaluating the markets, et cetera, et cetera? And I guess, I know that the mass hire folks have their own data. Now, is that data that mass hire is collecting going into the Dussey stuff? And is this the same thing, or is there another layer of data that you could look at that might be a little bit more regionally focused?
The mass hire would be utilizing the Northeast Regional Blueprint. They're, they're part of that group that develops that plan. I cannot cite exactly where Dussey is pulling their information from, but I know that it is statewide, because it's not just looking at ours. So that's why we use the Northeast Regional Blueprint to see where the highest demands were within our area for career pathways.
Mr. Lai?
Just curious, under environmental science and sustainability, one of the things I hear a lot in municipalities is about water and wastewater treatment, plant operators, water technicians, example. Is that, is that something in this region that popped out, or?
That particularly, yes. We actually have a plumbing student that got his, the highest, he was 18, got the highest certification that we had. And we actually ran a night school course for wastewater certification last semester. So it's definitely a pathway for our students, and it would be something that would be entry level.
Any other questions? Mr. Early?
No, go ahead.
I know you talked about the one for, that, the sister program to electronics and robotics, but how, the EMT program, wouldn't that naturally just fit into the health assistance?
The vet?
No, the EMT, the emergency medical technician.
I don't believe that's a Chapter 74 program.
It was one of your, it's under the public safety.
It's, that's one of the career pathways.
Okay.
So the vet, yeah, the vet tech is, yes. We're hoping that the vet tech pathway actually eases some of the burden from our...
This was under criminal justice and public safety.
Okay.
The EMT program, which I believe you've done before.
We've done it as an adult education, yes, yeah.
Yeah, the EMT falls under the criminal justice. In fact, they're changing the name from criminal justice to, I can't remember what it is, but it falls under that same shop area, because many police officers have that training.
Right.
And so they could go off in either direction.
Mr. Early?
I believe a senior that just graduated with his treatment license is working for the town of Merrimack right now. And that came to you appropriate?
Yes, he was, he is. And he was the youngest person in the state of Massachusetts to ever get that licensure. He was a plumbing student, but decided he wanted to go that route, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, motions on the table?
Thank you.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Tru?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
And the chair?
Yes, passes. Next item on the agenda, out-of-state field trip request, CAD.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I have an out-of-state field trip request to Shea Concrete at Nottingham, New Hampshire for the CAD design. So it's pre-casting and production for CAD design. They will be going on October 17th, and there'll be 26 students, grades 10 through 12.
You have another one, too. Why don't we take them together?
I do. I have an out-of-state for the wrestling tournament on December 13th, 2025, at Salem, New Hampshire. And at this time, we have, it looks like 14 students that will be attending that.
Is there a motion to approve, Bo?
Motion to approve the two out-of-state field trips.
Motion by Mr. Murphy, seconded by Mr. Fitzgerald. Any discussion? Mr. Early?
Do we have the proper paperwork?
I will have it before they go.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Tru?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
And the chair?
Yes, passes. Next item on the, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Next item on the agenda is new business, vote to add Frank Cousins as co-chair of the School Building Committee. I put this on the agenda to add him as a co-chair with former Mayor Rorak in speaking to the municipalities. I think there's overwhelming support to have them as co-chairs leading this. So wanted to put that forward. We've already submitted the initial list. This would amend it to add former Sheriff Cousins as the co-chair with former Mayor Rorak working in tandem. Again, we've had discussions with the cities and towns, and there seems to be universal support for that as the leadership team of the School Building Committee. So if there's any questions, if not, if someone could make that as a motion to appoint him, since I can't make a motion from the chair.
Motion to add Frank Cousins as co-chair of the School Building Committee.
Motion by Mr. Murphy, seconded by Mr. Fitzgerald. Any discussion? Mr. Early?
Was this discussed at your recent meeting amongst the cities and towns?
Did that come up? I don't think that came up, but that has come up in some other conversations that we've had more one-on-one with some of the town leaders. Anyone else? Ms. Lai?
I'm just going to note that I'm going to object to this, but it has nothing to do with Mr. Cousins. It has more to do with the fact that it's highly unusual for a school committee to appoint the chairs or the vice chairs of the School Building Committee. That's usually a task that's left to the School Building Committee at their first meeting. So I just didn't want it to seem like I was, was a vote of no confidence in Mr. Cousins.
Any other discussion? Ms. Lowell?
How was the original chair selected?
It was a recommendation by me. It was a letter submitted at the last meeting. I'm not sure if you were here.
No, I wasn't, that's why.
Anyone else? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lai?
No.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Tru?
Yes, yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
And the chair?
Yes, passes. Next item on the agenda, appoint school committee member as liaison to the Municipal Working Group. Mr. Lai?
I don't know that action is necessary. I think it's more just a question of the Municipal Working Group. Is the Municipal Working Group now essentially morphing into the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee? Or is that two separate bodies?
I would say that that's their intention, you know, is to start moving forward with the regional agreement to start getting to work, yes.
So they'll essentially become the, that committee? Okay, so then I think I would withdraw this, because I know we have four...
I'm not sure if that's 100% accurate, though, because then it would technically be a subcommittee of the school committee where all those meetings have to be posted. I don't know if they intend to meet on their own like they've been doing. So I'm not sure that I understood it as that they were going to disband and not...
No, I don't think they were going to disband, but I think they wanted to start working on a regional agreement.
Right, but I, my understanding was, I thought they were still going to probably do both, because one is technically a subcommittee of the school committee,
Right.
subject to the open meeting law requirements.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, because I think there's going to be things that come up that they're going to want to discuss as municipal working group.
Yep.
Well, I, the agenda item stems from conversations about whether or not there should be school committee liaisons to the municipal working group. And I think initially, I was under the impression that the municipal working group was not looking for involvement of school committee, but then subsequent conversations that I've had with members of the municipal working group have led me to believe that they have been desiring to have school committee representation. So if they are remaining as such, and that's a separate body, the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee is a separate body, then I would say, is it appropriate to have liaisons to the municipal working group? My understanding that members of that committee have asked why there's not school committee participation.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I couldn't hear quite well. So could, you either speak louder or someone's, yeah, I did not hear any of that.
Okay. Which, which part? I'm not sure, any of it?
How about you?
Right from the beginning, the first part, whose groups were, and then how they were morphing.
Yeah, I guess, I guess from the beginning.
Yeah, I guess the question is, is the municipal working group going to continue to exist as a separate entity? Or is it going to become the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee? And if it's going to become the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, then we already have school committee representation. I think that that committee has four school committee representatives. If there's a separate municipal working group, which is different than the regional agreement, I should just call it the RAC, I believe, from the conversations that I've had, one of them was Mr. Colburn, that they have asked about school committee representation on the municipal working group. So if that's going to continue to exist as its own entity, then I would like to entertain or make a motion that we have liaisons to the municipal work.
So, Mr. Chairman? I mean, it would be my understanding that we have an official body that, you know, is sanctioned within law, which is the RAC. And then we have an informal municipal working group, you know. And, you know, and they're the same thing, except for the four. So, I mean, I think that something naturally will happen. You know, I think that the municipal leaders would know not to have, I mean, they have to have a posted meeting to have a RAC meeting. So our four members would know. And if the municipal leader is on their own choice, because it's not up to us, wants to meet informally on other issues, well, more power to them, but they are under the owners of the open meeting law. So I don't know, I don't know if, I, we don't know. I mean, because right now, we have, you know, these two paths, and I think eventually they'll merge into one and be all one happy thing. But I think that, I'm not sure if a motion is necessary. I just think that, you know, the municipal leaders know right from wrong. You know, they know what an open meeting law is. And if they attempt, I don't expect them to do any of this, but I mean, if the concern is that, you know, the school committee isn't going to have representation on the RAC because they're meeting separately, that can't happen.
That's not the concern at all.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not the concern.
Yeah.
The concern was that if there is a distinct body, the municipal working group, then, and they desire to have school committee liaisons, then we should, you know, be respectful of that. But if essentially their role is now, in a form, any formal way, I don't care about their informal meetings, if their formal role is now really to move on to
Absolutely.
the regional agreement, we already have four representatives, which is why I said, in that case, I just withdraw.
Yeah.
It was more curiosity, and if there was an action to be taken...
So I think there'll be, end up being two. I think there'll be, the subcommittee of the school committee will be one that meets upon that. But I do think that the municipal working group, as has been meeting for a year or whatever they've been meeting now, a year and a half, does plan to continue at some point. I don't know how often, but I do believe that there's some plan to continue some of their meetings that they have.
Is there a way that the group would formally ask for school committee members?
Yeah, so they requested my attendance on Monday's meeting.
Yeah.
I spoke to them about this. The feedback that I got was that they're not looking for a liaison from this committee to be appointed there. That if they needed us, that they would request us, and if we need them, request them. But it's not our committee to appoint a liaison to. It's, they're the municipal leaders, and it's, I don't even think I could appoint somebody to their... I don't think it'd be like me appointing someone as a liaison to the Raleigh Board of Selectment, and you just walk in and say, "Hey, guys, I'm here, I'm the liaison." Without them saying that they want it, I don't think that we can do it. The feedback that I got from them was that if they needed us, that they would request us. That was the feedback that they gave me on Monday. Anyone else?
I've withdrawn any...
Ms. Lai withdraws her motion. There was no second.
I'm going to make a motion, but I just withdraw.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Next item on the agenda, actually, came up one day. Can we, we have a suspension of the rules to discuss the subcommittee that we voted to establish for the regional agreement. I had some feedback from the municipal leaders, so, but it's not on the agenda, because that came up on one day. So if somebody could make a motion to suspend the rules to discuss the subcommittee that we established for the regional agreement.
I mean, to amend...
To suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules, sorry.
Discussion.
Seconded.
Motion by Ms. Lowell, seconded by Mr. Early. Call the roll. The roll allows...
I have a question or a motion.
Yes.
It's to suspend the rules.
Yes, suspend rules, to do what?
To discuss the...
Subcommittee that was established.
The subcommittee that was established.
Discuss and take action, or just discuss? Discuss and take action?
Requested action by the municipal leaders.
Do we as a, are we as a body going to be asked to take action, to take a vote?
I am going to let everyone know what their feedback was, and then it'll be up to the committee what they want to do. I'm not going to ask you to do anything, I'm going to tell you what their request is.
And that's, that's consistent with open meeting law, to take an action even though you haven't?
If you suspend the rules.
Okay. My common rule now?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lai?
No.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Tru?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
And the chair?
Yes, rules are suspended. Just wanted to bring up, at that meeting that they invited me to, the discussion was had about the group that was going to be established to amend the regional agreement. And that would obviously be members of the 11 communities, one member from each. And then we have voted for four school committee members to also serve on that subcommittee. They would like that the four school committee members be non-voting members of the subcommittee. They don't care if the school committee serves on it, but I think they felt that the... Um, they don't care if the school committee serves on it, um, but I think the, they felt that the, the issues were that would be discussed would be more pertinent to maybe them as municipal leaders. So they, that was their request. I said I would bring it back to the committee for discussion. So again, this is a request coming from me.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering, uh, did they product, did they articulate in some reasoning behind that?
Um, yeah, I think the reasoning was, and, and Mike is here too, if he, if he wants to speak on it. But um, I think the reasoning was is that they feel that the issues that I think are, that are gonna be mainly discussed are, are not potentially school committee issues. Um, you know, they're to do with the funding mechanisms for the cities and towns that, you know, I think ultimately they believe is their responsibility as, as the municipal leaders. So I think that's where the request was coming from. Um, Mike, I don't know if you wanna, if.
You're accurate on most of it. I would just also add municipalities will worry about odd numbers of votes. So we have all eleven communities, all have one vote, say, I know Ron, our rep, signed up for it, so it sounds we would have two votes. That was the, the nervous part about the, the municipalities are nervous about votes, because we wanna be fair to each other. Each one of us get one vote, each community. So if you put school board members with voting on it, say, Dix from Haverhill, Ron, we just gained one for each community. So that was the more concerned of being fair to each other and not having, you know, one vote higher than the other. That was a lot of the discussion. We welcome, we all welcomed that school board being on it, but just the vote thing is, all of us are extremely nervous about.
Mr. Early?
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yep.
And talking, and I think that's a fair thing that you just said. It's only fair to let your, your committee there have the vote and, you know, we're here.
Yep, and I can also add that on the ad hoc that we're on right now, most of us plan on going to the regional agreement, because we wanna be involved. Last time we weren't, now we wanna be involved, we wanna work with you guys. And that's why, you know, we welcome school board members on that too. It just, we worry about the votes, that's what we're mostly worried about. And the ad hoc is probably gonna go away for a little bit, because we're gonna be meeting anyways. And then maybe afterwards, we get the school bill and everything else, but we still wanna meet, because we've, we all realize, all eleven communities, there's a breakdown in information. I don't, I mean, now I, I speak to Mary Bear on a regular basis and, you know, Georgetown members that I never did before. I, yeah, the coastal communities were very close, but we didn't know people up here. So we wanna do a better job with our communications, we've, we recognize our failures and we wanna do better. So after the schools built, God willing, we can move into the ad hoc and still meet with each other, like quarterly or monthly, whatever we need, to make sure we are here for Whittier.
Anyone else? Ms. Lowell?
Um, just historically, when the regional agreement was originally drafted, it was drafted by municipal members, there was no school committee in existence, right?
There would have been no Whittier Tech school committee in existence, cause Whittier Tech didn't, didn't.
Right, right.
Who was on that? I, I wasn't even alive, I have no clue.
Uh, but yeah, I mean, historically, the regional agreement was drafted by community members. There was, there was not a, there was not a participation by school committee. They might have been on a school committee, you know, some might least one was.
And if we, you know, wanna put it on to the, I know I just brought it up, so if you guys wanna think about it and put it on the next agenda, I think that would probably be fine as well. I don't think that there'll be a meeting before our next meeting, um, but I did wanna bring it up for discussion, so that everyone kind of knew what the request was. If you had questions, you could ask them, understand it, and then if you want, like I said, I can put it on the next agenda for an actual action, if you want. If you don't feel comfortable, just come up tonight.
I understand Mr. Colburn's point of, you know, the, not having multiple votes from certain towns, I understand that and I appreciate that. Um, my, I guess my question is, are we, is there any requirements that we have school committee members on that committee?
I don't know if there's a legal requirement or not.
I don't think it's a requirement. I mean, obviously, the more communication that this group has with the municipal leaders, the better. So it's, I do think it's very important that there are members here that are on those committees. Um, you know, we're, some, we have to work through a bunch of things, right? So this is, this is my first time doing a regional agreement, I was barely born.
Yeah.
Born, but I was barely born. Um, but we're gonna have to work through some things, we're gonna have to get an attorney to help us and make sure that we have our Ts crossed and Is dotted as we move forward with this process. Um, and that's been the, the great thing about this group is they're, you know, we've done a lot of talking, but it's really now time for us to get to work, to start doing some of this work. But we're gonna have to get an attorney, um, that is an expert on regional agreements, to make sure um that we're doing that work. But I don't think there's a requirement, there's a requirement that the school committee develop a RAC, you know, develop this, and you've already voted for that.
Right.
Um, and that comes from the school committee, but I don't necessarily think that you, to, there has to be a voting member on the committee.
Where did the idea of having school committee members?
Consult, okay. The last time. Um, I do think in the interim, it might be something worthwhile to, to check on. It would be out of the ordinary for the school committee to have a subcommittee where they don't have voting members on. I, I've never done that in twenty-two years, so it, it would be different. Um, never really heard of it before. Um, so it, it certainly could be something that at the very least we checked on um with the lawyers to make sure, A, you know, can you do it like this? Can you have basically four school committee members there as non-voting members on what is a subcommittee of the school committee? I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Do you need a motion to table this till next meeting or?
Yeah, if anyone else wants to ask questions and then when they're done, then we could table it and put it on. Well, we wouldn't need to table it, cause we're under a suspension, so.
Oh, okay.
There's really no technical item to, to table, we just put it on the agenda and get the answers to the questions that maybe we, we're not sure of. Uh, Mr. Lai, then Mr. Bo.
Yeah, I actually, I have no objections to that, I think it makes sense. I think the point of having four members on it, whether they're voting or non-voting, I know that myself, when it comes time to vote on the regional agreement, it would be nice to know that there were four school committee members who participated and could sort of maybe be the liaison to explain the processes. Not that they, that the members wouldn't, but I, I would feel good to know that there was somebody there that was participating. Whether they vote or not is certainly less important to me than that they are able to be present and involved.
Uh, yeah, well, I do think it's appropriate uh just to wait a week for the sake of it. Uh, however, as I wade through all the pros and cons, I think I'm pretty much settled on thanking you for taking the hot potato and handling yourself.
It's fine. Uh, as Dick and a lot of you guys know, who's been here for a while, I support what you guys, I'm a tradesman, so I know their importance at this.
Yeah, you, you're tackling the tougher questions that, you know, um, you got, ultimately you got to make.
Yep, and I can say, all eleven communities were pretty much on board, were, were willing to compromise, I guess I should say.
I mean, I do understand there will be tangent issues, I know that will affect the structure of the school committee and things like that. So obviously, we need to be very cognizant, but.
Mr. Early?
I've been on here a long time, no question about it, but I do hear in the community, in all the communities, cause I'm, I'm at the event. There's been a lot of friction, but the last two months, month and a half, two months, I feel and I hear that it's getting a lot better. Communication was the big thing. I myself can probably say, we probably didn't do a good job communicating a lot of this stuff to a lot of the towns and cities. But we've also had it online everywhere, but that's not the answer, we probably didn't do a good job. And I, that's what I feel, you know, thank you, and that board.
As I told Maureen Scott, you guys were too good at your jobs. That's what it was. We didn't, you didn't need us and we didn't hear from you, cause you were too good at your jobs. Well, unfortunately, when you're gonna ask
That's why we're here.
Yeah, that's why we're here in the community, you're gonna ask the communities for a lot of money, and now we need to know what's going on.
Anyone else on anything on the item? Mr. Rossi?
Yeah, I think it's a, a good idea to take, take it to the next meeting, for us to think about this, talk about it with our, with our members that are part of the community on, on that committee. And uh, just to understand how fragile this is, looking back at our past, how we're, how we're moving forward, so.
Okay. All right, so we'll put it on the next agenda, in the interim, we'll check with legal counsel on um a legal aspect of it. Can you establish, have the subcommittee of a school committee, have non-voting members basically of the school committee, would that be allowed or not? We'll get the answers to those questions and then put this on the next, the next agenda.
Okay. Could we follow up with that, uh, rep, the, that we met with last meeting and find out what, why he suggests that having school committee?
We have them under contract or something to be able to do that?
Yeah, okay, great, thanks.
Anything else, another request on that? All right, seeing none. Next item on the agenda, reports of the special committees, uh, executive, nothing. Instructional personnel, there is no report, plant operations, no report, salary negotiations, no report. Uh, admissions committee, Ms. Lowell and Mr. Bo. Looks like first you have minutes. Uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September seventeenth and twenty-fourth admissions subcommittee meeting?
So who?
Moved by Mr. Bo, seconded by, was it Mr. Lai? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the role.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. True? Ms. O'Connell?
Yes.
And the chair?
Yes, passes. Proposed admissions policies, that Ms. Lowell, Mr. Bo, Superintendent, who, who has this?
So there's another set of minutes?
There's another set of minutes.
I did the twen, seventeenth and the twenty-fourth together.
Christine Morrison, the Director of People Personnel, is, has a PowerPoint presentation to go over the work that was done by the ad hoc admissions committee. So, um, just to inform everyone as we move forward, you have received a copy of the draft policy. Um, and um, DESI did not give us the um, the guide, the guidance for this until the end of August. And of course, they want it by November first, so we've been kind of on a tight timeline. I really wanna thank the um committee members that were a part of this. There were some difficult discussions, but I, I think that at the end of the day, we have a, a very good policy. So I'm gonna turn it over to Christine Morrison.
Yes, hi, good evening, Superintendent Lynch, Chairman Wood, and members of the school committee. Um, as Ms. Lynch said, the state of Massachusetts, the elementary, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education did vote to um and change the regulations, and we received the updated um policy information from DESI on August twenty-second. So we do need to have our admissions policy turned into DESI for November first. And we also have to have our new application ready for the public on November first. So the subcommittee met on September seventeenth, we reviewed the new regulations, defined the timelines, defined what a complete application is. And we also determined which lottery we would propose, which I'll speak a little bit more about in a second. And on September twenty-fourth, we approved the new application, we talked about transfer applications, we decided on how to apportion the seats from each city and town. Uh, we talked about how to keep our waitlist and also the appeals process, a requirement, all requirements of the new regulations. All right, so when it came to the lottery question, that is the, was the biggest change in the regulations from the state. Um, and after a lot of conversation, we determined, um, well, we've, we're proposing that we do use the qualifying or unweighted lottery. That unweighted lottery, lottery would be that all completed applications would have one ticket in that lottery. The other lottery is um was the weighted lottery, and it would have those selective criteria that have been used in the past. And when we had that very thoughtful and lively discussion about that, it was, it came down to that we think it's more equitable that students would each have the same share of uh chances in that lottery. And then that, with the lottery system, we had to talk about how is it gonna be fair to allot those seats to each city and town. So when we looked at that, um, just for clarification too, that is a local decision of the school committee. Um, we looked at all the options and we are recommending, the committee is recommending, that we use an average enrollment for each city and town for the last ten years of the ninth grade enrollment. So that um, we seem to be the most fair, and looking at the numbers several different ways, that seemed to be the most fair way to do that. So the lottery would be drawn adhering to those allotments, and then will be reviewed each year, updated each year, to make sure that, to mean the fair distribution of seats. We talked about the waitlist for each community. So the lottery would be drawn and each city or town would get their allotment for the seats. When those seats were full, um, if, if a student vacates that seat, say they choose to go someplace else and there's no other students on the waitlist for that city or town, then the next person on the general waitlist would get that seat. So we wanted to make sure that it's spelled out and it's clear as to how that allotment would happen for both just the lottery and the, and for the waitlist for each city and town. We also talked about the deadlines, and so for this coming school year, our current mid-year, so we're gonna open up our applications on November first. The first round of admissions, the first lottery, that will actually be held for our mid-year applications. So each year, our ninth grade students have an additional opportunity to apply. Their applications will be due on December first for the mid-year admissions. Then all of our regular admissions for fall admissions for grade nine, so our current eighth graders from our cities and towns would be due on January ninth, which is the first Friday, no, the first Friday of the first full week in January. And then for our ninth and tenth grade admissions for the fall, it would be the next month, February first, for those applications. So it is spread out. So another change, because it is very important that we're allotting these seats through the, through the lottery, we want to make sure that each city and town is paying fairly for each of the students from their, from their municipality. So we are asking students on the application to attest that that is where they live and that they understand that we are going to ask them for a proof of residency prior to their enrollment here at Whittier Tech. So if a student cannot provide that piece of residency, when we're verifying it, then we would go to the next available person on that waitlist. So again, we're gonna give those students two weeks after the application, and that is gonna be clear from the moment they apply. It's gonna be clear on our website and in our policy that that's necessary for it to be, to happen. And then we're going to help them if they need help, but they have fourteen days to upload that right through our GoToCTE program. And that's it in a nutshell, but I'm very happy to take questions.
Questions, Mr. Early?
Quick, can you come up with the percentages for, do you have the data, the percentages for each town?
Yes.
The average at work?
Yes, I do.
Where, you gonna put it up there or?
I actually don't have a slide for it. Um, is that something that you want me to share about the percentages for the current year?
Yes, please.
All right, for the last ten years, absolutely, so.
Each town and tell them, you know, how many people or students they are.
Okay, so we've give, I have the percentages, and then I also have the, the number for, say, a class of three hundred and forty or a class of three hundred and sixty. So for Amesbury, it would be eight percent apportioned to them. That would be for a class of three hundred and forty, twenty-seven students, and a class of three fifty, twenty-eight. In Georgetown, it would be four percent, so that would be fourteen students for a class of three hundred and forty, and for a class of three hundred and fifty, it would be fourteen. Sorry, I don't have my glasses. For Georgia, for Groveland, it would be three percent, that's ten students for three, a class of three forty, and eleven students for a class of three fifty. For Haverhill, it would be sixty-eight percent, that would be two hundred and thirty-one seats out of three forty and two thirty, hundred, two hundred and thirty-seven seats out of three fifty. For Ipswich, it would be three percent, that's ten students for the class of three forty and two hun, uh, sorry, class of ten and, or eleven for three hundred and fifty. For Merrimack, it would be three percent, that's ten students for three forty and eleven students for three fifty. For Newbury, it would be seven, uh, sorry, two percent, which is seven students for three forty and seven students for three fifty. For Newbury Port, it would be two percent, same, seven. For Newbury Port, it would be two percent, same, seven students for each class size. For Raleigh, seven as well, but two, so that's two percent again, seven and seven. For Salisbury, it would be four percent, which is fourteen students for three hundred and forty and fourteen students for three hundred and fifty. And for West Newbury, it would be one percent, three students for three hundred and forty and three students for three hundred and fifty. Other questions? Yes.
So just so I understand this...
Hold on a second, Mr. Early.
Oh, sorry.
Are you all talking to Early? You at the floor?
Yeah, and one more question with, with this, and I, we, I know we talked about it. What is the best meth, the best method of two or three of these towns didn't meet their quota? How are the other, uh, students gonna be divided into the other town?
Yes, so if a student doesn't meet their quota, then the next available seat from that city or town would go to the master waitlist in order...
Of the town.
Of the town. So not, not first order of the town, yes. And then if there's no students available left in that, then it would go to the general list.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rossi.
Uh, can, can you just walk through this so like I know what it looks like? Like, are, are we pulling three hundred and forty seats and seeing how they all, is that...
So we're gonna, we're actually going to have a lottery with everybody in it and draw all the names out. So, so there'll be a waitlist, so there'll be a running late, sorry, waitlist in order. But as they're drawn, they're also going into the bucket for their city and town and filling those seats, and we're keeping the waitlist in each of those towns as well, in the ci...
Okay, so if, um, so like for Merrimack, for instance, you'll get to ten, like however many, oh, three hundred and fifty or six hundred?
Depends on how many apply.
Right, it could be seven hundred, right.
Okay. And, uh, this is based, Eric, so every ten years, it would, that number would change, right?
So that's why we're going to look at it each year, just to update that.
Because it would only because based, it would be based on the applications, not the number of kids that are coming in.
So it, enrollment, we're using enrollment right now, but yes, we can review and change it if necessary, depending on the upcoming number of students, school-aged children.
Right, but I think, so if you pulled all the names and you filled like, I don't know, Answerville got twenty-seven, Georgetown got fourteen, on and on, everyone got the exact number, it's gonna change, right?
Right. Yes, I see your point there.
Good.
So we'll have to look at that.
Yeah.
And that's why, that's why this committee, and we have to review this each year to, to see how...
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Coppinger.
What exactly are we considering as proof of residency?
So there are three, um, so it could be a utility bill. So currently, we do require proof of residency for our students who are in school out of district but have an in-district address, so we'd probably use the same pieces, and it would just be one. So it would be a utility bill, a copy of a lease or mortgage, or their, the identification or passport of the parent with that address on it.
So just thinking about guardianship and that kind of thing, where their names may not be the same or...
Right, and thankfully, our sending schools also are providing documents with their home address and their, sometimes their parents on their, say their transcript and things like that, so we can corroborate that, um, and just asking for that one piece of proof. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Coppinger.
Under the deadlines, uh, the second one, grade eight, uh, January ninth, twenty-twenty-six?
Yes.
Does that happen before the eighth grade tours?
No, the tours are complete by that time.
They are?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And the reason why we chose, that seems like a random number, but the reason why we chose that date is we were, we're settling more on January first, and the school, everyone's on vacation that week, and we want to make sure that students have access to help if they need it.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, well, it's Ms. Delai.
I just want to say, having served on the, um, committee, that I just was really proud and appreciative of the work and the thoughtful, very thoughtful, student-centered, you know, approach that you took to this. Um, you know, I know not everybody is pleased with the state's policy change, um, but I really felt like you accepted what was and then went on from there to talk, you know, what's best for students. And I, my, personally, I've always been, um, you know, I like the idea for equity reasons of a fully, you know, blind lottery, so I'm excited that that might be a direction we're going in. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Ms. Lowell, then Mr. Fitzgerald.
Um, where this mid, mid-year acceptance is going to be brand new for everybody, and you really only have about an eight-week window to share it with, um, students and schools. Um, and I guess it's a two-part question. How are you going to get that information out to them, and what numbers do you anticipate giving them for that? Where this is all great, the numbers that we have are for next September admissions, but for this January admissions, are you gonna be able to, and I, I'm sure you can't right now...
Right.
But will you be able to say to each community, we anticipate that you have zero seats and you will have one, or...
We can definitely use our, the same data to check those numbers. First, we will have to determine how many seats are available in each of those classes, if there's any seats available, and then, um, see what the percentages are of our students in those, in those cities and towns and decide on that.
And regardless, just to point out, regardless, even if, um, from Amesbury, even if Amesbury is told, you have zero seats, there are other communities that may have seats available, and an Amesbury student could apply, and maybe those other towns don't have an applicant, and that Amesbury student could end up taking a Newbury seat.
That's correct, because this will still include the lottery.
Right.
So it'll be drawn in order, and then the next available seat would go to the next student on that general list. Yes, and as far as your question, um, definitely Jill and I, Jill Karakowitz, who is the Director of Guidance and Admissions, will work together to get that information out once this is approved to all our sending school districts and high schools.
Anyone else?
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Uh, I believe I read somewhere, a third party will be verifying the lottery process. Who would that third party be?
So we are gonna use our vendor, GoToCT, to come in and do the actual drawing. They'll be on-site that, for the drawings, all three of them.
Okay, and a second question. Sometimes we have students that move out of the district, stay in state of mass, and we allow them to stay, does it affect whether they have to do anything different regarding staying here, or can we still just allot them, give a seat to stay if they move out of district?
That's a school committee decision. So you made that decision last June?
Right, so, same thing.
So again, you would make that decision?
And I'll just follow up. We did discuss that, the possibility of, um, students moving, vocational students who are automatic transfers, and how do they take up those seats, and, um, it's, historically, it's such a small number that we didn't anticipate it impacting individual communities for those kinds of unique circumstances.
I mean, I just figured it's normal to be a lot, so hopefully it doesn't affect, we can still keep that.
What else? Mr. Early?
I too was on the committee and thank everyone that was on it. We have less than eight weeks before the applica, little less than eight weeks before the application gets in here, and it's gonna take them on the other side two or three weeks. So how are you actually going, after we appro, if we approve this tonight, how are you gonna go get it to all the schools? You sending letters to them or...
So depending on the vote this evening, Jill and I have a meeting skilled, uh, scheduled tomorrow to talk about that.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bow.
Uh, yeah, I would also like to echo the great work of the staff and, and the thoughtfulness, and I guess really just to the committee, I mean, this is the first time, it's a process. You know, I, I feel good about our first year in that. What goes on beyond that, you know, that's, um, you know, what a process is about, so, um, we're, we're, I, I'm excited, and, um, we will, you know, find true as we go along.
What else? Done, is there a motion to approve it, the policy?
I make the motion to approve the...
I'll second.
Mr. Bow. We did, already?
No, he's making it.
Mr. Early, seconded, and... Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinger?
Yes.
Ms. Delai?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Paglia?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Bow?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell?
Yes.
And the chair.
Yes, passes. No executive session posted, or is there a motion to adjourn?
Of course, go adjourn.
Mr. Fitzgerald, seconded by half the committee, but we can say, Mr. Murphy?
Okay.
All in favor of adjournment? Aye. Anybody opposed? Seeing none, we are adjourned.